Good evening, everyone. As Mayor, I call this electronic communications meeting of state and city council to order. I note that this meeting is being convened with city council members using the Zoom platform, broadcast over the city's cable channel, and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask the clerk of council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting. Ms. Simmons?
Mayor Dole.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington. Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
I have confirmed that all council members are present.
Thank you. I ask that City Manager Steve Rosenberg now identify his location and those city officials or colleagues, if any, present with him at that location, and the participation of anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am participating from my residence in St. There is no one with me at this location. Other members of staff participating using the Zoom platform include Faith Simmons, clerk of council, Leslie Beauregard, Assistant City Manager, Phil Treier, Chief Finance Officer, and John Venn, Chief Human Resources Officer.
All right, thank you. Please let me mention that in calling this meeting, notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice by memorandum provided to members of council. This meeting has also been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page. Access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During this budget work session, as in the past, there will be no opportunity for public comment. Public comment concerning the budget may be made during the public hearing on the budget scheduled for Thursday, April 23rd at 7:30 p.m., or by sending an email to the clerk of council at SimmonsSSF@ci.stanton.v-a.us, no later than Thursday, April 30th. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting is being conducted by Zoom, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which as part of the total circumstances makes it impracticable or unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with City Council ordinance 2020-04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v-a.us/cogord2020-04. Given that we are conducting this meeting by Zoom, with the meeting being livestreamed on the city's website and broadcast over the cable system as it occurs, I believe it merits reminder of a few special requests as we undertake this meeting in this unique format. First, I emphasize the request that each speaker speak loudly and slowly and self-identify each and every time when speaking, so that it will be clear who is speaking before your remarks are made. Second, please pause after each speaker to allow a brief interval between that speaker and another speaker. Third, if for any reason a participant cannot clearly hear the speaker or must leave the meeting before it is adjourned, please let us know. Fourth, all votes will be taken by roll call and recorded in the minutes. Fifth, I ask that if any member of city council has to leave the meeting for any period of time, to please interject and make an announcement so that the clerk may take note of attendance in the minutes. I ask that you also announce your return, so it also may be reflected in the meeting minutes. Finally, I ask everyone's patience, because without being in the same room, it is likely that a speaker may not realize that another speaker is continuing. Again, we may unintentionally step on each other's words, so it's fine if we need to have the speaker repeat or clarify. We'll take whatever time is necessary, so that everyone is clear about what is being said and by whom. I will now take questions from council members and participants if you have any questions about the process. Are there any questions about that?
No.
No.
If not, I would then turn this over to Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Good evening to you all, and good evening to the public who may be listening to this work session. We last met with you last Thursday as a body on April 9th, and at that time, we gave you some details about our efforts to rework the budget in light of the pandemic, and that is to rework the budget not only for FY 2021, but also to adjust for the current fiscal year FY 2020. In the weeks since we were last together, Mr. Treier and Ms. Beauregard and I have continued to make progress in our efforts to address both fiscal years, the remaining quarter of the current fiscal year and next fiscal year. And Mr. Treier is prepared this evening to share with you a presentation to report to you on that progress that has been made. I would like to inform the public that the PowerPoint presentation that will be displayed on council member's screens during the presentation is also available to the public online presently, and the address at which the presentation can be found is www.c i.stanton.v-a.us/budget. And the presentation can be found there, so that individuals can follow along during the presentation. So what we'll do here is let Mr. Treier make his presentation. When he's done, I will have some further remarks to share with you, and then after that, we'll open it up for discussion amongst council members. Mr. Treier?
Okay. Madam Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we plan to provide some more detail on our path to balance the FY 20 and 21 budgets. We'll start with FY 20, where we hope to provide clarity to both what has been done and what is in process. As a reminder, our projected funding gap remains at $2.6 million. This came about as a result of projected revenue shortfalls during the periods of March through June 2020. Sales tax is projected to be just 60% of the same time last year. Meals tax, just 33% of the same time last year. Transient occupancy tax, just 25% of the same time last year. And we've applied the delinquency factor to the expected $13.5 million collections that is scheduled to come in on June 20th. In response, our city manager immediately froze vacant positions with limited exceptions, eliminated all but unnecessary non-compensation expenditures, and has deferred CIP project funding. Slide three focuses on the actions that the city manager has taken and quantifies the impact. These 10 items, salaries, part-time, benefits, insurance, professional services, training, maintenance, equipment, utilities, and fuel, adds up to $1.5 million. And this came about from reviewing each line in each department, and it's a summation of savings from hundreds of different lines that make up our budget. This $1.5 million is impactful and is a direct result of the city manager's decision of three weeks ago. Slide four quantifies action items three through five. The deferral of CIP projects. This calls for a budget amendment to be introduced and approved by council of $1.4 million, which will be moved from the CIP fund into the general fund. Projects affected include the jail expansion, $500,000; police radio replacement reserve of $400,000; and debt service reserve for the high school project of $500,000. Item four, we have delayed summer park programs to July 1st. We're projected a savings of $45,000. We hope to have everything up and running by 4th of July. And finally, item five, the involuntary termination of 64 part-time positions, which equates to $75,000 worth of savings. So that's how we plan to address, that's how we started to plan to address FY 20 and what we're in the process of finishing now. Slide five, we start to address FY 21's projected $4.2 million gap, just like FY 20. Sales tax, meals tax, transient occupancy, and real estate tax collections are the driving force behind this shortfall. In response, the city has eliminated a projected 2% salary increase, which was to have been effective on January 1st, 2021. That produces a savings of $183,000. The reduction of local transfer to the schools as per the traditional revenue sharing formula equates to $1.7 million. The deferral of FY 21 CIP expenditures, which are embedded in the original FY 21 budget, equates to $941,000. Reduction in other line items, non-compensation and part-time labor equals $434,000, and reductions due to personnel actions equates to $944,000 in savings. It's this line item which is what we're going to begin to address on the next slide. Option A, which happens to be one of three options and the one that we generally recommend, begins with the concept of applying 10 furlough days to all employees and leaving all open positions frozen throughout FY 21. As we are vetting option A, the number of open patrol officers within the police department immediately jumped off the page. Currently, the department has four open positions in this area, which accounts for 11% of patrol officers. Because of these openings, we felt that applying 10 furlough days to this group of employees would impact public safety, and Chief Williams agrees. As a result, we are eliminating furlough days for police patrol officers. The 10 furlough days will be applied to the remainder of the police department. Secondly, when reviewing the fire and EMS personnel, we noticed that on a percentage basis, these employees' pay would be disproportionately impacted versus every other employee group. The reason for this is how the fire and EMS shifts are scheduled, EMS shifts are scheduled, which are 24 hours at a time. To adjust for this, we have reduced the number of furlough shifts for fire and EMS down to four in order to bring equity to these employees. The fire chief and the captains will have 10 furlough days applied. Finally, employees who earn $15 an hour or less, which equates to $31,200 per year, will have their furlough days waived. Slide seven provides a summary of option A. We start with the 10 furlough days being applied at the top, and we reduced by the employee groups that we've mentioned above. Finally, below, we have the open positions, which include the four patrol officers, the E911 operator, half a communications manager, which is offset by consulting services that we project on paying for that position, a traffic maintenance worker, and two street equipment operators. All told, we're looking at personnel reductions totaling $944,000 as a result of this option. Slide eight, we have option B. This call for graduated pay reductions affected July 1st, 2020. Employees at or below living wage of $15 an hour would have no reduction applied. Employees above $15 an hour and below pay grade 21 would have a 5% reduction, and employees at or above pay grade 21 would have a 7.5% reduction. Pay increases would be restored, if possible, to FY 20 levels by July 1st, 2021, in time for the FY 22 fiscal year. Finally, option C, we were to lay off up to 5% of the workforce, affected July 1st, 2020. Up to 17 fully benefit positions would equate to $892,000. Option C includes savings associated with the vacant positions, and staffing would be restored as conditions warranted. Option A, as we mentioned earlier, is the option that we are in favor of. This allows for the greatest flexibility to react into the economy. We can add, we can reduce these furlough days as the year unfolds. As positions come vacant under this option, they too will be frozen, and with the limited exceptions as approved by the city manager. By freezing these positions, it will allow for a natural contraction of departmental structure and will allow the city to adjust to additional potential revenue shortfalls as the year unfolds. Finally, well, not finally, almost finally, slide 10. Our FY 21 original budget, as everyone is aware, had had three rate adjustments built into it. A real estate tax increase of 2 cents, which would equate to $410,000. This is a 50/50 line, meaning this is part of that traditional revenue share agreement with the schools. We would be intent impacted $200,000, and the schools would be impacted. On the city side, we're hoping to build a revenue structure to reduce dependence on reserves, and on the school side, frankly, it equates up to three teachers. Water fund, we have a 5% increase proposed. It's $156,000, and we're primarily trying to build a rate structure to support future CIP projects. Most notably, the North River Pipeline project is scheduled on the outside of our five-year CIP plan, and that's a $6.5 million Phase 1 of the North River Pipeline that we're trying to build capacity for the debt service associated with that project. The environmental fund was projected to go up 10% with the refuse rates. This would bring in $234,000. Again, we're building a rate structure here to support future CIP projects and to sustain the recycling program. These are the major decision points, I think, going forward. And finally, on slide 11, we have the revised budget calendar for you. We have a joint work session scheduled next week at 5:30 with the school board. We have our regular meeting at 7:30, where we will hear public hearings on the budget ordinance and tax and fee ordinance. We have another work session scheduled for April 30th at 5:30, May 7th at 5:30, May 14th at 5:30, and final consideration of the budget at 7:30 on May 14th. I would like to add as a reminder, as per state code, the city needs to have a budget approved for the schools no later than May 15th. It's our intent to have a complete budget ready for approval, both city and schools, by the 14th, and we will be asking for a 50% appropriation at that time, followed by an additional appropriation request in the late fall. That concludes my presentation.
So, Madam Mayor, members of council, let me just share some thoughts with you. First of all, one point that I know that Mr. Treier would like you to know is that in the, and Mr. Treier, help me out here if I don't get this correctly, but there's a, you've got a $400,000 cushion in FY 20. So, we have achieved a cost savings, $400,000 in our favor by the moves that have been made or that will be made, so that if revenues are not as favorable as we have projected them to be, we have, we have some room to absorb the additional loss of revenues. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Treier?
It is absolutely correct, and whatever is not spent will go into the fund balance and cannot be spent without specific council action.
Thank you. Let me share with council members what we see as our path forward from here. Mr. Treier has reviewed with you the calendar. Our plan is to revise the budget based on what you have seen presented this evening. We're going to move forward with an assumption that there, in our preparation of a revised budget, with an assumption that there will be no increase in the real estate tax rate. So, we will be looking for another $205,000 worth of savings that can be achieved in order to account for that loss of the additional revenue. And again, as Mr. Treier observed, that there will be an equal reduction in funds to the school board. We do intend, in the revised budget that we prepare, to maintain the increases in the water user fees and in the refuse rates. You will have public hearings on the budget, including the real estate tax rate, the water user fees, and refuse rates, next Thursday, April 23rd. That evening, after the public hearings, we will invite further guidance from council. So, we're going to move forward in our work to revise the budget, assuming no increase in the real estate tax rate, but increases in the other rates. But that will not preclude a change in any of those assumptions. So if after the public hearings, council determines that it wishes to eliminate the increases in the water user fees or the refuse rates, we can address that issue. Similarly, if council determines to proceed with the increase in the real estate tax rate, we can, we'll be able to change. But time is of such essence for staff in moving forward with revisions to the budget, that at this moment in time, we're going to assume certain outcomes and proceed on that basis. The city portion of the budget, we will be in a position to complete no later than Thursday, April 30th. And we will circulate and publicize it widely, and during your, Mr. Treier, do we have a work session scheduled, scheduled on the 30th?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, so at that work session, we will be able to share further detail with you about the revised budget on the city side. The schools portion of the budget is largely dependent on detail not yet received from the state and not expected to be received until April 30th at the earliest. Consequently, we're not in a position to commit to completion of the schools portion of the budget before Monday, May 4th. Then you have another budget work session scheduled for Thursday, May 7th. We'll be able to look at the full picture. Well, we will have received the guidance from you on the tax rate, the water user fee, and the refuse rates. We'll have all of the information on the school side, so that we'll have everything packaged together and available to council and the public. And we still will have another week before the final budget is scheduled for your consideration on May 14th, during which to make further refinements and adjustments. So that is, you know, what we see as our path forward from this date. And with that, we're available to answer your questions and, you know, to participate in a discussion amongst council members on any of these issues. I don't see...
I think we lost the mayor.
Yeah, I think Mayor Dole...
One last participant.
So let's stand by for a moment while we wait to reconnect the mayor. Very good, Mayor Dole. We are at a point where we're ready for council questions and discussion.
All right, council members, do you have, I'm sure you've got some kind of questions or comments or discussion. So let's start with Vice Mayor Kyer.
Clarification, you mentioned the $400,000 cushion, but we're not assigning that anywhere yet, correct? That's going to set aside.
Yes, sir, we are not assigning that anywhere.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Oaks?
So, the $400,000 cushion, as Ophie referred to it, if we were not to approve the increase in the water fund and the environmental fund for, for this budget, could that cushion be used there?
We could transfer with council action. We could transfer money from the general fund over to those two funds, if that's what council desired.
Okay, where were you thinking of potentially using that cushion?
It would, it would simply, if our revenue projections fell further, it would supplement, would be within the revenue, it would be a source of revenue, transfer revenue in, and it would just shore up our revenue projections. So there's, there's not a specific expense, per se, equating to that. If it ends up not being spent, it will reside in the general fund, but during FY 20, it's just going to help supplement our revenue projections.
Okay.
And if I can add to that, Ms. Oaks, there's such uncertainty in the current environment that Mr. Treier has done the best he can at this point, using sources available to him to estimate the revenues to be received in the remaining quarter. We will not really get a good look at what to expect until the end of April, when we receive the report on March sales, transient occupancy, and meals taxes. So, we've been, I don't think aggressive is the right word. We've been conservative and undertook to make reductions in expenditures for the remainder of the fiscal year, as, really as much as possible, guarding against missing the mark on the revenue projections, because there's, you know, just so little basis to make those projections.
Okay. Well, now, as far as the, you had mentioned... Okay, well now, as far as the, you had mentioned that you were going off the bases that that would not be increased, but if it were, that's $410,322, is that correct? That amount?
Yeah, it's $410,000. It's currently within the original FY '20 budget. So if we were not to enact a real estate tax increase, we would adjust for it accordingly.
Okay. And on the water fund, if we were not to do the 5% raise for this year, next year, would it be 7.5 is what we would need to have it at in order to be back?
Yeah, we would have to adjust upwards for a couple of years. We're hoping to build up gradually the rates rather than having one gigantic rate increase out of the blue coming to citizens. So we were hoping for about a 5% increase the next few years. So yeah, if we did not enact a rate increase in FY '21, then FY '22 would probably be 7.5% and as would FY '23.
What about on the environmental fund if we did not have the increase for this budget we're discussing, the 10%?
Yeah, rates would have to be adjusted in subsequent years.
Okay, are we looking at 20% for the following budget or?
We wouldn't have to do 20%, perhaps 15%.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Holmes, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, Phil, you were saying that if we didn't enact the real estate rate, bring it up, we have a $200,000, was it $200,000 difference if we raised the water and sewer and garbage pickup?
Refuge, I believe, is 234, water is 156, and 2 cents in the real estate tax equates to about 410. That's a revenue share line item with the schools and the city would split 50/50.
And there's a possibility that we might be able to not raise the real estate tax?
We would, sir, we would adjust accordingly.
So, Mr. Holmes, probably one of the more important points associated with that issue is that without the tax rate increase, there's an equal reduction in revenue to both the city and the schools, about $200,000 each.
That's all.
Okay, Dr. Curran.
So I thought I heard that there are no new, that all planned capital expenditures have been put on hold for now, is that correct?
Yeah, we have currently frozen CIP projects that have not begun, and we would be pulling back basically reserve funding that we have built into the FY '21 general fund budget. That's $941,000. That includes fire truck replacement reserves, ineligible street paving repairs, funding sources for major repairs to city buildings, acquisition of major equipment, new sidewalk projects, replacement projects for concrete sidewalks to brick, matching funds for BDOT street construction, and an annual share of the Blue Ridge Community College Capital Building Fund.
Mr. Treer, will there be any effect on planned expenditures to develop the Stanton Crossing property?
On Stanton Crossing property, we have pulled back just today, the RFP that we had out there, the contractor who was a little bitter, was unable to get their license in a timely manner. We are hoping to delay 60 to 90 days to see how the current economic conditions evolve, and if everything appears to be heading in the right direction, or at least stabilizing, we will be in a position to rebid that project and to proceed.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Maed.
Mr. Treer, did you build a cushion into the FY '21 budget similar to the $400,000 cushion in the event that projections on revenue fall short?
No, ma'am. FY '21 was particularly challenging from the get-go, that was even before the virus. On the city side, we had $1.6 million worth of additional budgetary adjustments that were not within the FY '20 budget, most notably from what you've heard in multiple meetings, the JL, $449,000 operational, that's not construction, that's just operations, $233,000 with BRS adjustments, we lost SAFRA grant funding of $100-plus thousand. There was some new positions, constitutional officers mandated, non-funded position mandated by the state, there's a whole host of expenditures that made FY '21 particularly difficult. The revised budget does not have a cushion in it, I don't believe it has a cushion in it. Our revenue projections are very close to revenue projections provided by outside sources for the city of Stanton. We do, as a safeguard, we are recommending a 50% appropriation at May 14th. A subsequent appropriation for the remainder of the year will occur in November or December, and the basis of that will be how our economy is developing, whether it goes up or down or remains the same.
And another question, what assumptions for the FY '21 budget have been made as far as reinstating parking fees, increasing fees for programs in parks and recreation, anything there that we should be aware of?
Well, now, our intent is to proceed with the current services that the city is providing. So we started off with a budget in FY '21 as all departments going concern, if you will, and that remains, that's going to remain with the revised budget. We tried to make some of the hard decisions with personnel and some non-comp expenditures, and we feel like if everything goes as projected, then we'll be able to retain our current service level to the citizenry.
Thank you, I think that's all I have.
All right, thanks. Dr. Harrington?
Three questions, actually. One, on the tax, on the revenue that would come if we did increase the tax rate by 2 cents. I'm assuming that the school board and the superintendent have been notified that we are at least contemplating not raising the tax rate.
Yes, sir, they have.
And a couple of hundred thousand dollars at stake for the school board, and they need to be planning for that possibility, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. The other, another question I have has to do with CIP projects. In a previous conversation, we had talked about a couple of projects that you think might be proceeding because the cost of them is sort of paid for by external sources, or at least a substantial part of the cost. Could you give us just a little review of what projects right now look like they might go forward?
Well, we do hope that the Stanton Crossing demo will go ahead and proceed, there's about $400,000 of federal funds that we have received on that, and that's roughly a, we have remaining about $2.5 million left in that project. We have, we have the Gypsy Hill Stream restoration, we actually have appropriations already of about $982,000 left on that. There is some grants, some new grant possibilities that Mr. Vaughn and Mr. Mill are pursuing, and hopefully that will come to fruition. We're not exactly sure whether or not we would qualify for it, but they are applying for it. And then we have the final project, it is the Central Avenue Streetscape, we have a substantial amount of funding, grant funding for that. The city's portion is roughly $400,000 on that, and so that we feel like we can probably proceed on as well, there is only $450,000 roughly of city exposure there.
And Dr. Harrington, if I might add, I believe there's also a project at the water treatment plant that will advance as well, and Mr. Treer can address that, too.
Absolutely, apologize for leaving that out. We, you know, there is some corrosion problems within the water treatment facility, and we plan on proceeding with the CIP project to address that corrosion. That'll come out of the waterfront, and we have adequate funding for that.
Thank you. And then the other thing I was going to mention that I brought up in our previous conversation had to do with the, including the members of city council, or the possibility of including city council in this notion of a furlough, if that's the option, if option A is the one we end up going with, is there interest in including city council in that plan as well?
I'll let city council comment.
Dr. Harrington, we've not, we've not looked in more depth at that issue, but if it's council's sense that they would like to have that explored further, we certainly can do so.
Okay, I mean, I think you're gonna, I think there's some legalities involved in it based on the salaries being sort of part of the city charter and all that. So I, and I'll just wait, and you can advise us all later if that's even a possibility.
Yes, sir.
And then, and then even if it is a possibility, figure out who, if anybody wants to do it, if there's a consensus for doing it or not.
Will we please talk it back?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right, I had just a couple. The furlough days, I'm assuming it would be left to department heads to kind of schedule their staff so that we have coverage?
Yeah, we had envisioned one day per month from July through April, and then we would add or subtract depending on the economic conditions.
Okay, and I'm kind of curious about the aspirational idea that we'll have recreation programs starting up July 1st.
I'm hoping.
I really worry about like the swimming pools, there's, I mean, there's no social distancing when you put 100 kids into a swimming pool, so I just had some concerns about that, and nobody knows the answer to that at all, but until a vaccine is developed, there's going to be exposure if there's not physical distancing, no matter what we're doing. So I'm just, I guess, expressing a concern, you know, because I'd rather say we're not doing any recreation programs, and then if a vaccine is created, or, you know, something gets better, we can always, you know, start it back up. Anyway, that's, and I had a question about the CIP project on the pumping station at Gardner Springs, is that being done?
That is in process, the design aspect, the design portion is proceeding, and so we would have phase two of the design occurring in FY '21, and actual construction beginning in FY '22, I believe.
So is that going to proceed?
Yes, ma'am, we have some debt services dropping off after FY '21, which is creating some capacity to absorb that project, so yes, ma'am, that is proceeding.
So council members, do you have any other thoughts to go around again, or, you know, I can just call, go down the list again and see if you have any more, Vice Mayor Carr?
I don't, I appreciate the work and efforts that's been put into adjusting this budget so far, so I'm looking to see what comes in the future, so for now, no other questions.
All right, thanks. Ms. Oaks?
Yes, I wanted to ask about the furlough, the 10 furlough days.
Yes, ma'am.
Will this in any way affect the health insurance?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Not at all.
Okay, as far as the furlough days for city council, I'm fine with that. I did want to ask-
Every other Thursday for the whole year, right?
Yeah, there you go. Or how that will work, just because, you know, we need to be at council meetings. Okay, and you mentioned again on the, with the 2 cent increase to 97 cents, that's equivalent to a little over $410,000, but that would, that would be split between the city and the schools as far as finding the difference to cut or to make up.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, and one other question, since I do have the floor, this question is for Steve. The dog park, the dog park still open?
Yes, it is.
Okay, is that going to remain open?
We have no plans to change the operation there at the present time, we are keeping an eye on it. Parks and Recreation staff is there on a regular basis, including Director Chris Tuttle. I myself am through there, and I don't think that, based on our observations, that there are any greater breaches of social distancing than we see elsewhere in the city.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
Phil, we won't, we won't have an ideal really until we get April's, you know, what the meals tax and the lodging taxes, because we have a half a month in March that was good. And there's-
No, I guess they don't turn it in week by week, it's all just one lump sum.
Well, we can get some indications, and I think, you know, because I spoke with Maggie prior to this meeting, and she has received some fast food items which looked like they were in pretty good shape for March, actually. But you're absolutely right, we won't have a look at the full month until after we have to adopt a budget, so our first real look will come on May 21st, a week after we adopt the budget, and of course, we have to adopt a school budget no later than May 15th, according to the code.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Curran, any other questions or thoughts?
No more questions, just a quick thought, I'm also grateful to Mr. Treer and Mr. Rosenberg for their good work, so quickly putting together these budget cuts, that the situation changes week to week, and none of us have been in this situation before. And so, you know, compared to a previous year's budgeting process, this is just incredibly dynamic, and I expect it to change again, and to change again after that, and then to change again after that, perhaps 20 or 50 more times. So I just appreciate everyone being flexible and trying to give us as much cushion as we can get as far in advance as possible.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Maed, any final questions or thoughts?
Just one question, any further guidance from the state as to impact, their budget impacts, the federal government? as to impact, their budget impacts, the federal government budget impacts that may affect us?
Well, we, we are expecting some more quantification to occur within the next week or so. You know, so I know the schools received notifications of receiving $674,000 worth of stimulus, which is, which is very good news for the schools. Nothing is really final until the veto session next Thursday. So I'm sort of holding my breath on that and waiting for the guidance to come shortly thereafter. I know that the staff on both the state side and the school side are working and ready to go. I know some of those individuals, and I know that they're making certain assumptions, and they're going to be cranking this out extra fast for the entire state, because we're all in the same boat, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thanks, Dr. Harrington, any final questions or thoughts?
Yes, one little update, I heard from Ann Cundy today at CS-EDC, and it was a good news, bad news message. The, you all remember the Afton Express project that we've been working on, and that we had agreed to participate in. That proposal has been accepted by the Department of Rail and Public Transportation. That's the good news. Of course, the bad news is that all of the money associated with that project that was sort of waiting there, ready to go, up until, you know, a couple of months ago, is sort of up in the air now. And we don't know whether that means we will go ahead and do it, or wait a year and do it, or whatever that means. If it's the latter, if it is, we're going to go ahead with it, but on a delayed schedule, which I think is probably the most likely scenario, then all the localities that bought in the first round, the six, the six different entities that said yes to that project, will have to say yes again to get that thing started. So I'm hoping that that'll move forward sooner rather than later, because I think it's a really useful project. The other thing I wanted to mention is it's kind of a word issue. I think all of us found it sort of jarring, even though necessary, to see, you know, 50 of our valued employees listed by category in an involuntary termination, a list of involuntary terminations. And the term involuntary termination is, has sort of a, an ugly connotation to it. And in the, in the art of the business, that's a category of separation that is necessary in order to maximize a former employee's opportunity to receive maximum unemployment benefits. I think that, if I'm, am I right about that, I could say it? That we wanted to separate those employees in a way that maximized their opportunity to get assistance elsewhere while-
Yes, that is, yes.
And I just, you know, to me, that's sort of a PR thing. When it, you know, when we talk about involuntary termination, I hope somebody is standing by each time somebody hears that phrase to explain that that's a category and a term of art that it was actually advantageous and in the best interest of those employees, former employees. So that's just a comment I have.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Well, and I would just like to add that I agree with Dr. Harrington on that, that this is advantageous to those employees at this moment in time. And that's hard to get that, hard to get that word out there, because you have to refer to it by the official, you know, name and everything, and it sounds worse than, than it should. But also, thanks for the work that you all are doing on this budget. I am quite sure you've never experienced anything like this in your career. And you know, you know now why Steve Owen retired. He knew this was coming.
When Mr. Owen and I speak, I thank him on every, every occasion I have.
Sure you do.
Yeah, so, you know, good luck, you know, continuing to work on this. And I do, I do agree with the idea of not raising the real estate tax at this time. So I'm hoping that that can be done in a way that has the least adverse effect that's possible. And, and I'm really, because I feel like we don't know how this is going to happen, that there may be some things, some services that we're doing that just aren't going to be able to happen, or happen in the way that we'd been providing them. And so in that might be some areas where we can save some expenses by not providing it in that same way. Anyway, so is there anything else from staff that you want to add in, or?
Madam Mayor, it looked like Mr. Holmes, it looked like Mr. Holmes may have had something-
I just said one question, this is Terry Holmes. The people that are being terminated, will they be able to get COBRA? Or were they part-time and didn't qualify for insurance?
John? You?
Microphone.
You need to unmute, Mr. Van.
Sorry about that. None of those part-time employees had health insurance with us.
I wonder why you were being so quiet this whole meeting, John?
That was it, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, so does, does anyone else have any final questions, comments, or staff or council members?
Madam Mayor, I would just like to express my thanks to members of council for the, for your patience with us as we work through this unprecedented scenario. And, you know, we, we think we have identified a path, and we will continue to update you and the public just as quickly as we can as we move forward.
All right, that sounds good. With no other comments or questions from anybody that I can see, and no further information from the staff, I will call this meeting adjourned.
Nice to see you all.
Everyone have a good evening.
Bye, take care.
Bye-bye.